Good afternoon and welcome to the March session of the Paulding County Planning Commission. At this time, if you have an audible device, cellphone, I don't care whatever, please turn it off or to silence so it doesn't interrupt the proceedings of the meeting. We're going to review the minutes here, but I'm going to, well, we'll do that and then I'll cover some of the basic issues of the meeting. Has everybody had a chance to review the meetings, minutes from the previous session? Is there any concerns, edits, questions about it? Hearing none, then I'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes from the February session of the Paulding County Planning Commission.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Callahan, second by Mr. Leggett, all in favor. Motion passes four, zero, and one. There you go. So the Paulding County Planning Commission is a recommending body. We will hear the application as it's presented by the applicant or the applicant's agent. Fifteen minutes is allotted for anyone wishing to speak on behalf, that includes the applicant. They may use all that time or allow others to speak, or they can preserve some of that time for rebuttal later into the, to the hearing of that particular application. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition to an application or may have questions, comments, or concerns, fifteen minutes is allotted for that side as well. If you end up in a line up at the lectern, be mindful of anybody standing behind you and their time to speak. And if you're going to be covering some of the same subject matter, you might be able to abbreviate the comments by doing that. Any questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant or to anyone standing at the lectern during their time of speaking does not count against either side. All of the applications before us today are within Paulding County Board of Commissioners' jurisdiction, so everything will be forwarded to the Paulding County Board of Commissioners with a recommendation from the Planning Commission on...
April 8th.
April 8th at the 2:00 PM session. The applicant should be present for it to be considered. Is there anything I've forgotten to mention, Mr. Robinson? If you would, please introduce the first application.
Thank you. First application is 2025-04Z, application by Jeff Will and Reba Will, requesting to rezonate 12.78 acres from R2 Suburban Residential District to A1 Agricultural District for agricultural uses, including dog breeding. Property is located in landlots 149, 152, 11, and 212 of the Second District, Third Section, along the south side of Mount Olivet Road and west of Gore Lakes Road. Sin Commission posts four. Staff has recommended approval, and there was some correspondence in opposition that is a part of your packet, and the applicant is present.
The applicant will please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair. I'd also remind the Planning Commission that if you are going to speak on an item or ask questions, please turn your mic on.
Hello.
Have you signed in, ma'am?
No.
Okay, if you would, please.
Do that be the application number?
Yeah.
Reba Will.
Jeff Will.
All right. And if you would, present your application.
I guess the, the 2071 address, we have farm animals, which is miniature goats, miniature donkeys, and we have a pony and a zebu, which is a miniature cow. And we're wanting to rezone that for that area, for our property. We already have the barn and it's already fenced in. And then we also want to do some breed-in for Bernese Mountain Dogs. And their, Bernese Mountain Dogs are actually a Swiss Linn dog. They're about, the females range from 70 to 90 pounds, and the males are usually about 90 to 110 pounds. We currently have two boys, and we have two females that would be for breed-in right now. We do have four other females, but they're fixed, so we want to do a little bit of breed-in so get our business license.
Okay. So when you say a little bit of breeding...
Probably about three or four litters a year. So we would prob, that would, the two females that we currently have right now, that would be two litters a year for them, because they're sisters. And then we're wanting to get probably two more females, puppies, so they wouldn't actually be able to breed until like a year and a half from now.
Okay. Are there any questions to the applicant?
And then the farm and the animals would not be for breed-in purposes, they're just for our pets.
Well, let me, let me ask you about that. The animals that you currently have, is the rezoning solely to accommodate your desire to do dog breeding? Or is it also just to bring it into a compliance relationship with what you're already doing with the farm animals you have?
Yes.
Okay. So open it for questions from the Planning Commission.
Are you willing to not have the dog breeding as, as far as part of the, would you rather have it agricultural for your other animals and not have the dog breeding?
We want to do both. We would like to do both.
But I'm saying, would you be okay with not having the dog breeding?
Yes, because we want to keep the farm animals. They're like, they're like pets to us and our grandkids and everything, yeah.
What type of facilities are you going to be keeping the dogs in?
Oh, they live in the house.
There would be no kennels outside. We do have already a fenced-in area that they play in right now. That's part, it's like in the front of the house area. And then we have like a welping box, two welping boxes, I would say. They would be, they're inside the room with us in the bedroom. Puppies.
It's a big room.
Yeah. So the puppies would be in there until they would be about, you know, four or five weeks old, and then they would go into the family room, the family living room. And that would be with the other animals that we have, the Bernese Mountain Dogs. But there would be like a big, like fenced-in area, like inside the living room.
We don't cage the animals or have kennels or anything like that.
Yeah, there wouldn't be no kennels. So, and then they would be going in and out of the house, being learned to train and to go out with the other dogs. So, but there would be no kennels.
That big a dog is going to have a big bark. And if you're having, going to have that many dogs, that's a problem for me. And I lived in an area where there was a rescue facility not far from which, was about a mile from me. And I had no problem with what they were doing, but in the evenings, even that far away, you could hear the animals barking over there. So, you know, I, I would be okay with you having the agricultural part, but with, with, you know, riding through your community, seeing the proximity of the other houses, I would have a problem with the dog part of it on my part.
Well, we...
Well, they come in at night. They sleep in the house.
Yeah, they're, they're not going to be outside.
Wild dogs.
Yeah, they're trained. Bernese Mountain Dogs, I don't know if you know, they're family oriented, orientated dogs. They're really therapy dogs for people, service dogs, and they are really good dogs. They don't like do all this barking and stuff like regular dogs do. Yeah, like a pack of dogs. But the puppies, like I said, they are, you know, probably before they would go home, they would range between 12 to 15 pounds each, and they would go home at eight weeks old. We do have our license already through AKC, so we do have our breed-in through them. They are licensed dogs. They're not just any kind of dog. And they, they start actually learning to be trained around four weeks old, you know, going in and out of the house. And I love to do it. We've had the Bernese Mountain Dogs since 2017. They're really good dogs, really smart dogs. They're not known to be doing all this barking and stuff like you would think so. And we live on almost 13 acres of land, more towards the back, not towards the house, towards the property close to the road. I love doing it. This would be my thing. My husband, he works, so it would be, I would be with them 24/7. So it wouldn't be like, they'd be by themselves. So I would be taking care of them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Just a quick question. The, you said to have a fenced-in area that's close to the house?
Yes.
How big is that fenced-in area and how close does it come to the closest property line? You have any idea?
Oh, it doesn't even come even close to any, no other, no other property line. It's actually like...
It's about 300 feet to our neighbor's property line.
Yeah, and then the, either, from either side of the property.
From either side is probably about five acres away from the other house.
So it's more towards the front of the house and the back of the house, I would say. It's not even near the lake.
It's centrally in the, in the property, it's in the center of the lake.
Did you say great parrots?
No, they're actually Bernese Mountain Dogs. They're Swiss Linn dogs, so, you know, like the females range between 70 to 90 pounds.
So what age do you sell, are you selling the puppies after they get a certain age?
Yeah, they get sold at eight weeks.
Okay, and what's the typical litter number?
They range between six, six to nine puppies.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant?
Do they sell quickly?
Yes, they do. Yeah, very quickly. We've had litters before, like once, one a year, and they've, like soon as we post them on AKC, they get sold before they're even born. Yeah, it's just, we got, I guess, notified that we could not do it if we sell more than one litter a year, so we're going to be selling like two, like I say, two to three a year, so. So they, they would go quickly, you know, they, they're sold before they're even born.
Okay. You, you mentioned that you had other pets?
No.
The farm animals, I call them pets.
Other animals?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, how many, what's the total number?
Total of our farm animals that we have right now?
Pony, the little cow.
About 12?
Four injured, two injured dogs. About 10, 10 animals.
10 or 12.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Do you have chickens also?
We have ducks, no chickens. We have three ducks.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission? Hearing none, at this time you may take your seats. You have some time remaining if your rebuttal is needed.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else here wishing to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, then I will now entertain a motion on application 2025-04-Z.
Mr. Chairman, I think, didn't we receive one in opposition email?
Yes, Mr. Robinson mentioned that.
Yes, there was one of the correspondents in, in the...
Was it just one person?
It was just one property owner.
Okay. Yeah. Do I have a motion on the application?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mr. Callahan. I have a second from Mr. Aston. All in favor? All opposed? We have a tie vote, and I will break the tie and vote in favor. Again, this will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners meeting on April 8th at 2:00 PM. Mr. and Mrs. Will? The application will be forwarded to the next Commissioners meeting on April 8th at 2:00 PM. You must be present for it to be considered. Mr. Robinson?
Okay, our next application is 2025-02SPSA Site Plan slash step, step amendment. Application by Hiram Development Partners LLC, requesting to remove slash modify zoning stipulations number 11 and number 12 on a 14.678, 67 acre property, which is a lot industrial, and it's from a former rezoning case 2004-80Z. The property is located in Land Lot 604, District 2, Section 3. It's located on the north side of Thompson Road, east of Bill Caruth Parkway, Sin Commission Post 3. Staff has recommended approval of removing the prior stipulation number 12 and to the new wording of number 11, owner developer shall install a right turn lane from the proposed development site access driveway at Thompson Road to the existing right turn lane at the intersection of Bill Caruth Parkway. All the other remaining stipulations from the prior case would remain in effect.
Is the applicant present?
Applicant's present.
If you would, please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Mr. Chairman, we haven't had any cause with concerns or opposition on this one.
Thank you.
My name is Jack Gruy. I'm here on behalf of Hiram Development Partners.
Would you say your last name again?
Gruy.
Gruy.
G-R-E-W-E-S.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm here on behalf of Hiram Development Partners. We submitted our application and received official staff comment in support of the things that you just described, but in essence, we'd like to amend the zoning stipulations number 11 and 12 such that the curb and gutter, the sidewalk, and the center turn lane are amended. I believe that per conversations that we've had with the Department of Transportation, completely abandoning the center turn lane wouldn't be adequate, so as included in the recommendation, we would construct and extend the right-hand turn lane from Thompson Road onto Bill Caruth Parkway, and that's all.
Remind me once again what activity is going to take place once the property is developed?
So this facility essentially is home to groceries, but as opposed to the groceries being shipped to the grocery store, they'll be distributed directly to your home.
Okay. And the desire for making the request to amend the stipulations from the previous rezoning?
Yeah, those are all...
To get it on the record as to why you're doing it?
Yeah, those are all... Yeah, those are all in an effort for project costs and uniformity for the surrounding area, essentially.
I would, based on the statement of staff recommendations, all staff is in favor or has no objection to this?
That's correct. The rewording of number 11 came from our DOT staff. Director and Assistant Director.
You have any questions to the applicant?
How many anticipated deliveries per day?
Not that many. So we calculate it by week, and in terms of trucks coming in and out, we're anticipating 15 to 20 total trucks on a weekly basis.
But anticipated 200 employees?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah, 200 employees, and they'll be working in two separate shifts.
What's the timeframe?
The timeframe for the proposed development? We hope to have them operational by November 1st. That's our goal.
Okay, now, when they start the deliveries, how often?
Yeah, the frequency of deliveries?
Yeah.
I don't know what exactly, when exactly they go out on, in terms of schedule, but I understand based on the information we've received from the tenant, the occupant, that it'll be between 15 and 20 per week, and they're going to be distributed to Atlanta and other parts of the southeast.
What time of the day?
Probably during regular business hours, 8 to 5.
Any other questions to the applicant?
So your facility would only be working one shift?
Two shifts, sir.
Two shifts?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What type of, all type of vehicles, 18-wheelers, whatever going in and out of there?
So we have constructed the facility to accommodate 18-wheelers to back up to the facility, as you see on the road, and then other vehicles that would be accessing the property would be standard autos that y'all might drive to work.
What kind, is there any type, there's no type of hazardous materials that will be on-site, right?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions to the applicant? Hearing none, you may take your seat.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on behalf of this application? Hearing none, is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to this application for amending the zoning stipulations? Hearing none, at this time, I will entertain a motion on application 2025-02-SPSA, and again, it is with the removal of stipulation number 12 and an amended version of stipulation 11 as written in the staff recommendations.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mr. Leggett, a second from Ms. Fitzgerald. All in favor? Motion passes 4, 0, and 1. And again, it will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners meeting on April 8th, 2:00 PM. You'll need to be present for it to be considered.
Okay, final application this afternoon, 2025-05Z, application by Chelsea McCamey requesting to rezon 12.55 acres, FAR2 Suburban Residential District, A-B Agricultural Business District, for the purposes of acquiring a kennel license for dog training, breeding, boarding, and grooming. Applicant is also seeking a variance to reduce the required kennel distance setback of 200 feet from any property line to 120 feet, which is actually along the southern property, their, her southern property line. And the property is located in Land Lots 528 and 529, District 1, Section 3. It's on the north side of Deer Run Path, which is a private driveway/aisement, and west of Friendship Church Road. It's in Commission Post 2. Staff has recommended approval with one stipulation, and that stipulation would be to coordinate with property owners to participate in maintenance of the private driveway/aisement. And we have had some calls with questions and some actually in-person visits at planning and zoning with some questions. Applicant is present.
If you would, please sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the Chair.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Chelsea McCamey. I am the owner of 286 Deer Run Path and the owner-operator of Envy My Dog Obedience and Training Solution. It is important to me to rezon my property agricultural so that I can be in compliance with both Paulding County Animal Control as well as the Department of Agriculture for my kennel license so that I can operate legally and continue providing the community with the services that I have been providing since 2017. So the premise of my dog training business, I am a canine aggression specialist. I went to school for it. I study canine behavior science, and the way that I help the community is rehabilitating aggressive dogs and then providing the community, animal control, animal rescue, veterinary staff, boarding facility staff, all pet care professionals with safety guidance and how to handle dogs that don't know how to cope in our everyday world for pets. I've trained animal control staff of multiple counties. Like I said, I train the doggy daycare staff, dog boarding staff. I've created safety programs for multiple boarding facilities, groomers, veterinary care clinics, things of that nature. In order for me to reach pet owners as well, I offer a board and train program where it is the safest option for the community and for the pet as well as their owners, for them to stay with me for no more than six weeks. Typically speaking, most people are only okay with me keeping their dog for three weeks because they miss them. But during that time, I teach the animals coping skills, I teach them how to regulate their emotional responses so that it lowers the risk of a potential bite on whether it's other dogs, people, or other people in the community. So a lot of my clients call me because they've already gotten in trouble with animal control because their dog was out of control. And I will say, 90% of my clientele, once they complete my program, the risk is not really there as long as they maintain the management that I prescribe for them. Animal Control has sent me a number of clients through their cases, their bite cases, and as far as I know, I've brought with me an officer from Douglas County Animal Control. As far as I know, none of the clients that I have trained that came to me from Animal Control have gotten in trouble a second time with Animal Control as far as bite cases go. Does anybody have any further questions about my services, what I provide, what impact that might have on the community?
Well, we're going to get right to that if you're done with your presentation, then.
I can add that I do also offer, or I will start offering grooming services, same clientele base for dogs that can't go to a normal groomers because they don't fare well on the table or they bite groomers, things like that. Those dogs come to me, they learn coping skills, I teach them how to tolerate grooming procedures, and then we get the grooming done safely, and that gives the owners peace of mind that their dogs aren't overly stressed out for the grooming process, and nobody gets hurt in that process.
I may want to talk to you about my daughter's Yorkie.
That's ones of the ones.
What dogs do you specialize in? I mean, I understand you say that aggression specialist, but I mean, is it a particular-
It's any, any dog breed you can think of, doesn't matter from like friendly, typically friendly breeds like Labs, Golden Retrievers, things like that. I get them in my aggression program as well. I do get plenty of German Shepherds, Dobermans, Rottweilers, Pit Bulls. However, just about every dog breed you can think of that is supposed to be friendly and is supposed to be oriented has come through my program.
And not to push the point too much further, but is there one particular breed that you see above others?
I mean, I do a lot of work with rescue, a lot of work with rescue. So yeah, I do get a lot of shelter mutts. I do get a lot of shepherd, German Shepherd mixes. I do get a lot of pit bull mixes. I get a lot of Lab mixes, but that's, in my opinion, I think that's because the population of those breeds are so much higher because they're so popular.
Well, I ask that, just understanding what you do and the service that you provide, and I'll agree that it's a service. You're in an area that's about 12 acres or so.
Yes, sir.
Precautions that you'll have in place with regard to what you do? Because I mean, if you're dealing with dogs with aggression issues, and I would understand anybody's reservation about being next door to that-
Sure.
-because of that specific purpose, unlike the first application we heard, which was purely about breeding-
Yes.
-a specific type of dog. It's a different type of operation-
Yes, sir.
-in my mind. Can you elaborate on what precautions you have in place? And again, if there's facilities that are required to be built in order to accommodate that, you know, you would have to go through Paulding County as far as any kind of building permits and compliance for that matter, outside of this hearing.
Yes, sir. So I am not going to need any more facilities on my property. I don't really want to change the composition of the property because the way that I bought it is what I fell in love with. So the property has a house, which I live in, with my personal dogs, and then about 800 feet from the house is my kennel building, which previously was a workshop. The previous owner built things, did electric work, tinkered with things in that shop. I've converted it to what I guess I would call an overflow kennel because I don't particularly want, you know, a whole bunch of client dogs in my house. And I say a whole bunch, but I don't, I don't take but three dogs a month. With that being said, all kennels, crates, what have you, are secure, crash-tested, escape-proof kennels. There are two doors within that kennel building that stay closed at all times. They're locked and secured, and that building is about an acre fenced in, is a six-foot privacy fence. It also has six inches of chicken wire buried. It's about three inches up on the fence and then, and then in an L shape buried under the ground so that dogs can't dig out. With that being said, dogs are not left outside unattended for an extended period of time, so there should never be an instance where a dog has time to dig out of the fence. So those are some of the precautions that we take to keep my neighbors safe, to keep people safe. The fence is always closed, latched, locked. We have carabiner clips to keep everything closed. Dogs are not let, let outside of that fence off-leash. All dogs are properly identified through microchip, through identification tags. If their owners do not bring identification tags, I put collars with my business name and number on them just in case. We've never had an issue with that before because dogs, client dogs don't get loose from my property. But all dogs are secured and handled by professionals only. I did also bring with me Kim, who takes care of my dogs and sometimes client dogs if I'm ever away from the house too long, dealing with a client, or if I go out of town for dog shows, things of that nature. So only pet professionals that are trained in handling difficult dogs are allowed to handle dogs on my property.
Okay, well, I ask those questions because the purpose of our board here is basically to consider a proposed use for a piece of property-
Yes.
...as to whether or not it meets certain specifications, it's compliant with the comprehensive plan of Paulding County, whether it's compliant with the future land use map. But also, you have to take into consideration the health and well-being of the community that's going to be located in. So that's the reason for my questioning. I will turn it over to other members of the Planning Commission for further questioning if there's anyone.
I have some questions for you. How many dogs will you keep there? What's the maximum number of dogs you'll keep on the prop-
On the property that belong to clients or myself?
Well, belong to clients.
So clients, no more than four dogs in a, at any one given time. And that, that's just because, for the most part, it's just me taking care of the dogs, and I understand the nature of staff-to-dog ratio because I used to manage dog daycares. So if there are too many dogs on the property for me to take care of effectively, then dogs are at risk, I'm at risk, other people are at risk. So no more than four dogs at any given rotation.
And you're requesting a, to drop our distance from 200 feet down to 120?
Yes, sir.
You've only, you've got less than two acres wide on the property. That's going to be, you're going to be real close to several of the residences around you there.
My closest neighbor, of course, as you can see on the map, is the horse farm across from me.
And when I was by your house today, there was no signage. Where are your notification signs?
I have them with me, in the car.
They're supposed to be posted on the property. Did you have them posted on the property?
It was, yes, sir. It was my understanding that they were to be posted for a total of 30 days, question mark.
Okay. Well, they weren't there this morning when I checked, so.
So I, I put them up on the 17th of last month, and so when I took them down, they had already exceeded the 30 days.
Yeah. Another problem I have with it, being on the fire department down there, I've worked several wrecks at where your road runs into Friendship Church Road. And I have a problem with your clients going in and out of there with all the people you have going in and out as far as your neighbors. That's, that's a real dangerous hill. If, if that was a flat area, you wouldn't have any problem, but especially the time between school with all the South Paulding people coming out that way, going to Ridge Road, that's a real dangerous intersection-
Yes, sir.
...where your road, your path goes into-
Yes, sir.
-Friendship Church Road.
So to remedy that, and this is the way that I've been operating anyway, is that I don't have clients constantly in and out of my property. If they're to drop a dog off, they can drop the dog off, but then I return the dog back home to them, and that reduces the amount of traffic on our gravel road.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
What is the size of the detached building that you're using for the-
The detached, the detached building is about, it's the size of a two-car, a three-car garage, but it's, it's relatively large. It's got a separate room for grooming. That's what I use to groom my personal dogs. That's what I would like to use to groom my client dogs. But the kennel is large enough to hold six 5x5s and a number of extra-large Rock Creek and Impact kennels. Those are large metal escape-proof kennels. So there's maybe six of those in the kennel with space for storage and a loft for storage.
So you have those kennels instead of having runs on the inside of the building?
They're, they're five-by-five runs, so to speak, as well as crates for dogs that might jump out of a 5x5 run. It is also fixed with a 10-ton AC and heating unit, which is all-electric, and it has electricity and well water running through the building as well with a hot water heater.
Do you have, do you have an easement to that Deer Run Path?
An easement is-
It goes by your, it goes by your property? Deer Run Path?
Outside of-
Do you have an easement or anything to it, or does your property border right up against it, or?
So the fence line does, just for a little bit, run alongside the gravel road. Yes, sir.
Okay. Have you spoken to that owner that owns that Deer Run Path?
Which owner?
In the back, back there? I don't know what her name is.
On this, on the south side with the horses, sir?
Yeah, yeah, I believe it would be.
I have not spoken with them, no.
Okay.
But, you know.
Do you have a time limit for each session?
So I don't run sessions as far as clients being at my home. They drop off and then they leave. But as far as training at my house, dogs are trained anywhere from 10 minutes to 30 minutes at a time so that they don't become overwhelmed with the exercises, and then I put them away and let them decompress, play, rest, whatever. We'll do maybe two sessions a day. Sometimes we skip a couple of days just to make sure that their cortisol levels don't go too high.
Do you check out the residents?
As far as their homes?
Your dogs?
Yes, ma'am. So when those dogs go home, I take them home, and then I spend about an hour and a half with the owner, teaching them the things that I taught those dogs. So while the dogs are with me, I take video footage of our training sessions every two to three days, just because of the amount of time it takes for me to edit those videos so that the owners have access to training resources long after the dogs come home. That's actually really the selling point for them, sending their dogs to me because most people are afraid to let their dogs go for reasons.
Do you have any returns?
I don't have any returns, but in the past, if I've, you know, ever hired contractor trainers, you know, sometimes we have had- we have had, you know, people ask for refunds. But me personally, I haven't had a single person ask me for a refund.
I mean, do you have any returns, that you have to come, bring the dog back to retrain it?
Yes. And the reason why that's important is because training is ongoing. The nature of behavior is habit. And if these dogs are to be successful, it's important for them to stay in a consistent state of learning. And it's also, it gives me an opportunity to catch my clients before they fall back into bad habits, which enables their dogs' bad habits. So yes, those dogs should theoretically stay training all the time. About half of my clients continue training after the board and train is over, but that does not occur at my house. They call me and I go out to their house, and I recreate realistic scenarios for them. And then because I'm orchestrating it, it's much safer than them doing it on their own.
So how many months does this take?
Sometimes it takes maybe two or three months until, until people feel like they've got it. I have a number of clients whose puppies I've trained, not in the aggression rehab program, whose dogs are four or five years old. And I'm still training them periodically, just so they can feel like they're still in control with their dog.
You've got down as breeding as part of your request.
Yes, sir.
What would you be breeding?
So I am in the preservation of rare herding dogs. So I have Belgian Lacanois, I have long-coat Dutch Shepherds, and I have Bouvier Des Ardens. I currently only have one intact female. And so I only have one litter planned for this year. And in the future, my guess is, for the next two years, I might, I don't have any litters planned for the next couple of years, because the female, the other female that I have is only six months old, so she's not ready to breed yet. But after this litter, that female is going to retire, and she will be spayed. So I don't expect any more litters until 2027. And after that, I only expect two litters a year.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions from the planning commission to the applicant? You may take your seat.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on behalf of this application? If you would, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Hello. My name is Tiana Robinson. I currently work for Animal Control Douglas County. I've also worked as a trainer for Chelsea McCamey. Worked with Animal Control Douglas County back in COVID times, around 2020, and then began training afterwards, because of working for Animal Control. I've noticed, over my course being with the county, that a lot of people are not aware of the behaviors a dog possesses, and those solutions to fixing them. So that's how I got into animal behavior myself, and through training and apprenticeship with Chelsea McCamey, was able to provide the service of teaching people how to handle those dogs in certain situations, to prevent the incidents that occur in working with Animal Control. As you noted earlier, we have had clients, or, sorry, clients. We have had county residents and citizens who have undergone near bite cases or leash law violations, who have asked about training, and we definitely recommend Chelsea McCamey to train those clients. I personally see that as a very needed service, because a lot of people just don't know what to do with their dogs. And especially for the ones who have aggression issues, or who have different behavior modifications that need a little more tending to, as far as like stress situations, or ones who are resource guarding with like food or whatnot. This service provides an all-around knowledge for it, that I am in support of, and I think is necessary to our citizens, to keep our communities safe, and keep our pet owners responsible.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on behalf of this application? Hearing none. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to this application, or may have questions, comments, or concerns? If you would, please sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
My name's David Graham. I live on the, I'm not the owner of the horse farm, but then the one to the left is my property. So I'm concerned about reducing the limit close to the southern border. But I have some other concerns, and I think, you know, are questions more than.
That's fine.
My first one is, if she's granted this zoning change, can she then increase the size of the business? Can she board more dogs? Can she build more structures? Which would, you know, lend to the noise level and everything else. And, you know, the safety aspect, I think, was addressed very, very well. So I'm not too concerned about that. But my main concern is, you know, what happens after this zoning request is approved, if it is approved? How can we make sure that it doesn't get too big and get out of hand? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition, or may have questions, comments, or concerns?
My question is?
Please state your name, ma'am.
Oh, Susan Burns.
And please direct your questions to me.
Oh, my question is, how many dogs does this person own right now? And did these dogs come from, were they at one time aggressive?
Is that the extent of your questions?
I would like to know if she enters her property from Deer Run Path or Friendship Church Road, because the sign was on Deer Run Path, not Friendship Church Road. And do the dogs require vaccines? I'd like to know how the waste will be managed. It gets very hot. And that's about in my backyard. So I'm.
Where are you in relation to the property, ma'am?
A little bit further. If this is south, the bottom of the paper is south, I'm just a little bit past that property right there. I'm at 1204 Friendship Church. And there are, this is a very good thing to do, but I'm not sure this is the right area for it, because there are a lot of children around here. And I've had, in the short, well, I've lived there kind of a long time, I've had five stray dogs come up to my house, that, you know, I've adopted, or taken care of, or sent to the pound, that nobody's claimed. So it's kind of a wild area, but there are a lot of children in that area, and that concerns me. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition, or have questions, or comments, or concerns? Hearing none, I will close that portion. And I would ask the applicant, if you would, please come back around. You do have some time remaining, if you would like to address any of the previous as a part of a rebuttal, or?
Yes, sir.
Just an answer?
Yes, sir.
And then if there's further questions, we'll get to that point.
Yes, sir. So to my neighbors, those are all very valid concerns.
Please address me.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Those are all very valid concerns. And I would like to start with the first, in that expanding the business or making it bigger on that property is not something that I intend to do, because frankly, it's a very wooded area, and the amount of work and the amount of money that I would have to put into it to build more buildings or expand, I'm not willing to do it on that property. So I, that's not something that I want for my neighbors to worry about. I don't want to do more than what I'm already doing. I simply just want to be in compliance, so that I can be good with the county and with the Department of Agriculture.
All right.
And then to the second round of concerns, as far as waste management, when dogs relieve themselves outside, we scoop regularly, we throw that away, and that gets carried off. So we don't leave waste in the yard. We clean our yards. I take care of the property as far as cutting grass, removing leaves, things like that. We have granules that absorb smell. And, correct, it is, it is hot in the summer, and there's a lot of trees that contain smell. So I work really, really hard, pressure washing the driveways, and scooping, and taking out waste, just to make sure that, A, I don't have to smell, you know, dog waste, but my neighbors don't either. As far as the safety of the residents around me, safety is my number-one concern. That's the reason why that I do what I do. I also hold liability insurance to keep myself honest, and then to also keep my, my clients safe financially. But in the years that I've been doing this, I've never let a single dog get loose or bite anybody. With that being said, I have a number of professionals that I use in my training scenarios with the dogs that are being trained not to bite people, and not a single one of them has ever been bit.
Okay.
What were the other concerns, so that I can address them?
How many dogs do you currently own?
I personally own 13. And like I said, those are show dogs. Those are dogs that I travel with. Those are dogs that I compete with. Those are trained dogs that the public sees in their training sessions, that other show dog people see when we go out to events and things of that nature. But those dogs are in the house, and those dogs are contained.
Right. And do you, do you require dogs that you, both your own, I guess, and those that you work with, do you require them to be vaccinated?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Before coming to your property?
Yes, sir. Rabies, Distemper parvo bordatella is required by the Department of Agriculture. And on the topic of safety, if there is a potential for any dog to bite someone, I am required to, A, make sure that they are vaccinated, and I keep record proof of vaccination, before they can even drop off. They do not come to my house if they are not vaccinated, because I have to keep myself, my staff, my clients, and my dog safe from disease and harm.
The other question that was mentioned by Mr. Graham.
Yes, sir.
Who was the first gentleman that was up, was regarding the reduction of the setback from 200 to 120 feet. That is purely because, as, as I'm reading it from the application, and you can comment on it, that is purely because the existing building?
Yes, sir.
That you use is within, is at that 120 foot.
Yes, sir.
You're, are you, you're not seeking to go below that? You're looking just to accommodate that building?
Correct. The building was there when I bought the property.
So you're not looking to expand it?
No, sir.
Further into that area?
No, sir.
You're just wanting allowance of the existing building, and you stated earlier that you're not planning to expand?
No, sir. No, no expansions.
Okay. You can talk on it if you like. I didn't, just to try to help you with that question.
Sure, sure. The location, so the location of the fence kind of brings that space closer to the gravel road. But if I were to meet that requirement for the space, I would have to tear all of that down, take trees down, level the area, and put up a new building.
Okay.
Which I can't say that I'm willing to do.
Is that the extent of your rebuttal?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then questions that I would ask you. Just to consider this, as you stated earlier, that you were not, you had no intention of expanding the business, would you stipulate to that as an additional stipulation? That it would not allow additional buildings to be constructed for expansion?
Correct. Yes, sir.
So that is a possible second stipulation. There's already one given, which was coordinating with property owners?
Mm-hmm.
To participate in maintenance of the private driver easement.
Yes. So that is, that's just something that the three of us have discussed a number of times over the last couple of years, how, how we would get together, planning it, funding it, and that's something that we.
So you've had discussions with other patrons of the driveway?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then secondly, says you own 13 show dogs, these are kept separate and apart from?
Yes, sir.
The dogs you work with?
Yes, sir. From time to time, they are exposed to client dogs, because my dogs are trained as demonstrators to teach new dogs how to behave in certain situations. And they're also used to teach my clients how their dogs should be behaving, and to give them practice on dogs that are, that are not bite risks, how to handle the leash, how to communicate with dogs, before they practice with their dog, who is a bite risk. But otherwise, they're, they're kept completely separate for safety reasons.
And the last comment that was made, in the extent of what was presented as questions and concerns, was regarding safety, the abundance of children in the neighborhood?
Yes, sir.
And such. Now, every business that you open, it doesn't matter what it is, is going to carry some inherent liability.
Yes, sir.
Some more than others.
Yes, sir.
But you, we've addressed the safety precautions that you take, and you feel that that is adequate to address those concerns?
Yes, sir.
Where they would not present a hazard to the public?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Adults or children?
Doesn't matter. Adults, dogs, children, loose dogs that might wander onto my property, because we have the same issue, sometimes that happens. But the way that I manage my client dogs on my property, it's no risk.
And you're open to, at any time that the county receives a complaint, that they can come to your facility?
Yes.
And inspect for those purposes?
Yes.
Are there any questions to the applicant, from the planning commission? Hearing none, you may take your seat.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
At this time, then, we will entertain a motion on application 2025-05-Z. Again, there's an existing stipulation that the owner has agreed to already. There's a second potential stipulation of limiting or restricting expansion of the intended use of the property for the business purpose, to be added if the planning commission so chooses.
You asking for a motion?
I'm asking for a motion. I can't make one.
I make a motion to deny, for the reason of the amount of property that she has. If we, I feel that it's too much moving away from our current ordinance, and the fact that if she were to sell it later, someone else would have that property with that type of zoning, that they could do what, you know, whatever their plans would be in the future. So I commend her for what she's doing. I think it's a great thing she's doing, but I make a motion to deny.
I have a motion to deny from Mr. Leggett, for the reason given of the amount of property for the purpose stated. Is there a second to that motion to deny?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Fitzgerald. All in favor of denial? All opposed? I will have to say that I would raise my hand to oppose the denial as well. So at this time, I will entertain a motion, again, with regard to application 2025-05-Z.
I'll make a motion to approve with stipulations number one, and add number two, which restricts any further expansion.
Motion to approve from Mr. Callahan, with the existing stipulation and the added stipulation to restrict expansion of the proposed business.
Mr. Chairman, may we also add to that expansion of the detached building as well?
Ms. Callahan, would you care to amend your motion?
Yes. That's fine. Absolutely.
So you're amending the motion in order to include no expansion of the, of the existing building as well?
Yes.
Did I capture that correctly?
Yep.
Mr. Attorney, is that okay?
Yes, you are still in need of a second.
I know. I just, so do we have a second on that motion?
Sir.
I have a second from Mr. Aston. All in favor? All opposed? I will approve the motion with my vote. I do appreciate your attendance at today's meeting. I will also remind the applicant just now that the motion will go before the Board of Commissioners on April 8th at 2:00 PM. You must be present for it to be considered. Appreciate your attendance. Thank you for being a good crowd. If there are any further statement needing to be made, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Callahan. Second by Mr. Aston. All in favor? Motion passes 4-0 and 1. Thank you.